All right, it's 6:30. We'll start the meeting. Any need for executive tonight?
I have three personnel matters, Madam Chair.
Recording in progress.
One is a discussion with, between the board and our VLCT consultant, Rick McGuire, about the town manager search.
Mm-hmm.
Second discussion with the assistant to the town manager. And finally, discussion of possible successors for our recently resigned emergency management director.
May I come over and go into executive session for those three items?
Second.
I want to favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, any need to amend the agenda?
I had mentioned a couple of things for brief conversations if you're willing to do it on a busy night. One would be just a discussion of the select board meeting schedule for next year, or for later this year. And the other would be a discussion as to whether the board wants to endorse Donna Wilson's proposed historic marker language in tonight's packet.
Okay.
Move to accept the agenda as amended.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, so anything, any corrections or anything on the minutes of, we have January 19th, and then the two special meetings on January 24th and January 26th. I didn't see anything when I looked through.
If it looks good, I'll pass them on down. Three of them, Joe. Bob? Yeah.
I'll get it.
I don't know.
I don't know.
I was thinking, oh, that's another one.
You'll note that tonight, the signature page is on the front.
Very nice.
It wasn't on this one.
Ease of signature.
You missed one.
On both sets of, on both sets of orders, I should say.
Oh, I see.
I was gonna say.
You will notice it.
You missed the minutes.
You will notice it.
I will notice it, okay.
Something I was forward to.
Well, it's only taken you what, 14 years to get that right?
I'm a slow learner, but once I get it, I'm all over it.
John, and I put them back in the order so.
Anything on the orders?
I see there was a 10, it looks like a $10,066 for the sidewalk scoping study. Is that what we've got invested in that project up to this point?
No, because I think they billed us a time or two before. They have a contract, I think, that goes to $27,000 total, with the Regional Planning Commission having a $3,000 fee to oversee the whole thing. And that's, of course, a grant project, so we'll get 80%, of this or so back. Any other questions? If not, I'll pass them along, Joe. Here's two sets of orders and payroll. Yes, it is.
Well, you notice, he's been doing it. Where his paycheck is concerned, he's been putting it on top forever, just not the rest.
Is that it?
I think so.
Okay. Town managers' report?
Yes, thanks, Alicia. There was another sidewalk committee meeting on January 25th, once again to discuss the most promising sidewalk routes, based on public input and constructability. The consultant will present their findings at a second public hearing now scheduled to coincide with the select board meeting of February 16th. And there were notices posted around town, and in tonight's Brandon Reporter and elsewhere. GMP has installed a streetlight at the intersection of Route 7 and Plains Road on the north side. The state has approved an extension of its permit for Dollar General to accomplish its punch list tasks that are still remaining, and Matt Casey of the Zeremba Group, from Dollar General's developer, will work to get the more time-sensitive work done ASAP. And he's in touch with V-Trans about that. A tax sale of six properties had been scheduled for Tuesday, January 25th. Happily for all, the town was able to resolve all six matters, and the tax pay, the tax sale was canceled. The town has begun advertising for a, an assessor clerk, as per our previous discussions, as possibly a way to save some money in the clerk's office, or the assessor's office, I'm sorry. The town manager, in consultation with the town assessor, drafted the notice which features an application date of February 28th. Anyone interested in this position should look over the announcement on the website, in posting sites around town, on the VLCT classified website, and in upcoming editions of the Rutland Herald and Brandon Reporter. It's in tonight's paper, for example. And again, if there, anyone's interested, they can contact me for more information. Barbara Noe's Pulling from the Regional Planning Commission has promised to research solar in Pittsburgh, and to tell us how we're doing with regard to the region's solar plan goals, and how we're doing in comparison with our neighboring towns. In tonight's packet, Barbara has kind of given us a status report. The state of Vermont has established a homeowners assistance program through which homeowners suffering financial hardships due to the COVID-19 pandemic may seek monetary help to pay mortgages, property taxes, water and sewer bills, et cetera. Learn more by visiting Vermont HAP, Vermont HAP, that is, at VHFA.org, or through the program's hotline, 833-221-4208. Longtime emergency management director Jason Davis has notified the town that due to his busy schedule, he will need to step down after town meeting as emergency management director. He did have a suggestion as to possible successor, which I'd be happy to discuss with the board later tonight in the executive session. Of course, we'd like to thank Jason, of course, for his many years of service to the town of Pittsburgh in that position. Repairs will be performed at the interior of the Depot Hill Covered Bridge, it looks like now, from Wednesday through Friday, February 23rd through 25th. Our contractor is Daniels Construction, and they are aware of the funds made available from our insurance carrier for this work, and have pledged to work within that amount. Finally, the town manager will be in and out of the office between Friday and next Friday, the 11th. Unfortunately for the town manager, Omicron is keeping me closer to home, so I'm available if needed.
Thanks, John.
It's a staycation.
All right. Any select board member remarks tonight? Nothing? Any public comment tonight? I think you're all on the agenda, so, I think everybody hears. Okay. All right, so Butch can get to where he needs to go. We're gonna, we'll skip over to new business, to state emergency dispatch operations. Butch?
I'm assuming, Mr. Pulling, Mr. Temple, and Mr. Booker are there?
Yep.
They've been attending several meetings with the issue of public safety, on how to move forward on state dispatch. I can tell you what I know from a state perspective. The commissioner of public safety has informed me that for sure, that they are going to move away from dispatching emergency services for people that they're currently dispatching for out of the state E-911 centers. And I can't tell you where, because it could come out of anywhere, to that end. There's legislation's been passed that it will take, we asked and passed a bill, it's gonna take three budget years to make this change. And that, that language was passed, so that towns can adjust their expenses to cover the expense of running a dispatch center, however it may evolve. And it's my understanding that the 12 county folks that are meeting, and I don't know how far along they are, but I do understand now that there is some sense of urgency. The commissioner also informed me that he will not leave us all in the lurch, that they will continue to provide dispatch services at a reasonable fee if necessary. So, we as, and we're not being a clown, the county's on our, we're the same vote, we're the same venue, we're the same, get stood up and get operation. In the government's budget, there's an $11 million appropriation to support this, this change from state dispatch to more local, regional dispatching. That centers off as an $8 million appropriation for startup costs. And then appropriation of $1 million a year for three years, to support the operations of the dispatch centers, however they may formulate. That was, that piece of the budget was presented today to the House Appropriations Committee, and the House Appropriations Committee looked favorably upon the appropriation at this point in time. It's early in the process, and anything can happen between now and mid-March, when the appropriations bill gets voted out of the House. But this is something that, that we all have been asking for since this all started in '14 or '15, I don't remember the exact date, of, we need some help. We think it's, we up to the state, help us transition, and the governor has placed that transition money in this year's budget. We hope that it holds and can move forward on a dispatch system, however it makes up. As a reminder to the folks that are here that are working on this, the legislature also passed a provision in law that would allow, however you configure your dispatch, however you consider your dispatch operations, would allow that operation to ask the county side judges, including the county budget, to charge each town a rate for dispatching services. And that, that legislation is still in effect. There's no, there's no monetary numbers, it's just that would be, that's a mechanism for the dispatch service program, however it centers off, to be supported by tax dollars. Frankly, it's a tax expenditure for the town. We don't know what, I don't know what that's gonna look like, and people that are working closely for this right now, at county level, can inform you of that. But as states, that's where we stand. The commissioner has told me that he will fund E-911 chairs in every dispatch center. The advantage of that being an E-911 chair dispatch center is, is there's money tied to that. The last I do, it was around $60,000 per year per chair. It's more of a stipend than it, there's an actual reimbursement for the total expense, because those chairs, the people in those chairs were costing more than $60,000, but it's a share of statewide E-911 budget. So that's, that's, that's a good one. The final thing that the commissioner has told me, and I think I've passed this along to the, to the folks in the county, that the county folks will be able to stay on these state towers, and the state will continue to maintain the local dispatch's patching equipment on all state towers. So, there's, there's an opportunity. There's also a, I would say, a sense of urgency to start moving forward in some direction. And with that, Madam Chair, I would ask, I know you have some, three or four local folks that are involved there, if they, if you're sure you want to hear what they're doing.
All right, thank you.
We had a meeting last Thursday with the county, county chiefs. We set up committees, five, well, there's, I think, five EMS, there were gonna be five EMS, and they wanted at least five law enforcement and fire. I volunteered to be on the committee. We got another meeting tomorrow night, so we're just in infant stages of this. An old Killington Fire Department has offered their dispatch center, and they were checking in on a couple other possible options, so we could talk about them. But there's nothing, nothing set right now. We're just, we're just getting started with it. But we wanted to get started with it and, and figure out what you're ever gonna go. I guess my personal opinion is probably, if we can find something that's already a dispatch center, that's already working, might be easier. But it's gonna be, you know, obviously expensive, because you're gonna have employees to pay, and they're not gonna come dispatch for us, and they can go someplace else and make a better wage, that's just the way it is, so. But, anyway, we're, we're starting to get on it, and the county wants all the select boards involved, with every town select board involved in it too, so they know what's going on, and so, that's all I got right now on my end, so.
Okay. Anybody else have anything further on that?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I have a message for the folks, especially Chief Temple, on a legislative note. If, if, if your organization chief decides to create a municipal organization, so that you have some legal protections, like a fire, similar to a fire district protections, to create that organization will take legislative action. So if you can consider that in the next meeting or two, we still have time to get that done in this current session, because the charter takes precedent over all other legislation in the building and that. But, so that's something that, if you think you're gonna move forward on those things, maybe you're, you're moved to talk about that sooner rather than later.
Have you talked to Bob Slatter about that?
Yeah, I ran by him, chief. So, maybe to bring that up again. But it is kind of time-sensitive.
Okay.
So, you make that decision, just let yourself or representative or all know.
Yeah, I think, I think it's important to protect ourselves on, on the cost end of it, you know, all the way around, setting this up. I don't, I hate to see us get into something, and then five years down the road, it's costing us twice as much as we started out with, so, you know, I think we wanna really do a lot of, lot of homework on this.
Thank you.
When is your next meeting scheduled?
Tomorrow night.
Oh, okay.
Supposed to be a Zoom meeting. I haven't got the, I haven't got the information, but I can, I can forward it to you when I get it.
I had, I had touched base with the Regional Planning Commission to see if it's on their radar at all.
Yeah.
As something they might help with, in terms of coordinating efforts. They're looking at it, I haven't heard anything. That's why I was wondering when your meeting is.
Yeah.
If and when I hear something, I can certainly give it to you as an option.
Unless they cancel, the last thing, we're supposed to meet tomorrow night at 7:00, so, but, you know, there may be a better option of making a new dispatch. I have no idea, but it's gonna cost somewhat of a while before we're done, but I guess it is what it is, I don't know. I just, I guess personally, I can't understand what the problem is of having us on with the state police, but I guess I don't know. I know there was a time where they begged us to come on, and when we got on, and now they don't want us anymore, so, whatever.
I'd like to ask Butch, do you know anything, Butch, about why we're getting the cold shoulder from the state now?
Yeah, I can, I can, I can talk about it. First of all, they're, they're, they're having trouble recruiting and, and keeping dispatchers, because it's a high-pressure job, it's low-paid, it's an extremely high-pressure job. And when they moved the dispatch center out of Rutland County down into Westminster, counting on, drawing on employee resources across the river, in New Hampshire, and that hasn't happened. They're very short-staffed down there, and the demand that they're, they're getting down there is growing more and more every day. We went from six dispatch centers, basically down to two. And it has frankly proven to be a fiscal failure. And so, we're trying to recover from that. And it's, it's a matter of money. We have been, many of us have been, been receiving free dispatch services from the state that was, that was offered to us back in the 80s, and we took advantage of that. And the other areas of the state are paying their own freight. And so, for, for commissioner, it's a matter of parity among all EMS, fire, and, and police services statewide. There's several dispatch centers across Vermont that are now operating, and Bomaile County comes to mind, City of Montpelier, of course, that's a dispatch center over Hardford Fire Department, and other areas of the state. The two areas that are affected the most are Benny and Rutland County, and the northeast community. We've been on, we've been on the, it's the only way to say it, we've been on the free dispatch system now for 30 years. And so, we've had, we've had a pretty good ride. And now, it's, it's, it's less financial than it is personnel. We just can't put people in these seats in the two dispatch centers that we have. They're actually talking about dumping fish and wildlife, and DMV patrols out of that dispatch center also. So it's just a fairly serious thing, part of the state.
I heard Tom Butch go to Montpelier several, several years ago, when they decided to do away with Rutland. I believe we told him this was gonna happen.
Oh, yeah.
But they knew this was gonna save almost, what, $2 million a year? $1.7 million? I'd like to know what his cost in those years, since that change is made. It would never save me, it's always been a huge cost.
We can get, we can get that, Tom.
I'd like to know it.
I just, we knew it was gonna happen, I was with you when it happened.
Yeah.
We worked very hard to stop it from happening, and it was a runaway train, and the administration at that time decided this was gonna happen because of money saving, and it's actually, it's actually costing them money now. And it was like a.
No surprise.
Bull's, bull's errand. It was an absolute bull's errand. We had a perfectly good system that was running, and it just, this, this did not work. So, for a lot of different reasons.
Thank you, Butch.
Okay, so, I'm gonna throw this out, whether it's liked or not, I mean, we're looking at putting up an auxiliary fire station over in Florence. So we've got the land, we're looking to build a building. We've got a rescue squad building that's gonna need massive amounts of repairs over the next few years. We've got a police department that's in a closet. The state and the feds are all about consolidating things into one building. So I guess what I'm gonna throw out, again, like you said, Bill, there's a lot of stuff we need to look into, but would it make sense for us to at least start to throw our ring and the hat for building that building over in Florence, and having dispatch, our police, our rescue squad, and your extra fire trucks, all in the same building?
Possibly, I, you know, I'm not sure. I, I'm thinking there'd be a, as far as dispatching, a, a more economical way of doing it, but I might be wrong, but, yeah, I think any idea we'll probably need to look at, but.
I mean, I'm just thinking, if you're gonna try to retrofit an old building with computers, and, I mean, we're better off, wherever, to me, wherever it's done, unless you've got a facility that's already up and running, that's got room to do this, you're gonna be better off to build a new building, energy-efficient, state-of-the-art, so everything is in there, ready to go.
I think that's why they're talking about Killington Fire Station, that's a brand-new station.
Okay, well, I just.
Yes, and they're on top of the mountain.
But they're, they're out of the way for picking up stuff. They're way out of the way to, if you gotta go pick up a warrant, or you're gonna pick up a restraining order, they're a long ways out of the way.
There's other ones on the table, though.
Yeah.
Right, that's what you guys are talking about.
Yeah. So, yeah, so.
The old system that you had a number of years ago, I'm not, I'm not totally up on all this, but the old system, which the state abandoned, they consolidated it, as I understand, telling you that they were gonna save us money, but I don't think that's been the case. Is it possible that they should consider going back to the way it was?
They took everything out of there.
Yeah, it's all gone.
Everything's gone.
But they gotta start over now in order to set up, it sounds to me like you're talking about each county having a center that will work.
That's what they want.
Okay, and then, and then each county, one county will work with the next county, I mean, you have to have.
Right.
And, so, that's a pretty, pretty big deal. A lot of people are involved. If the state's having trouble finding manpower, and it sounds like they are, what in the world is the counties gonna do? What is, what's town gonna do?
That's one of the things we're.
Gotta look at them.
They don't make it better.
Yeah.
And as far as the cost goes, I'm afraid, I hope I'm wrong, but don't you think that it's gonna cost a whole lot more to split it all up into counties, small districts? It's gonna take a lot more manpower, I would think, to man, because this is a 24/7 deal, as far as I know.
Well.
And you've gotta have, all these counties are gotta be on, tuned in and running 24/7. It seems to me like we're going the wrong way. It's, it's not possible to go back to the old system, maybe twink cat and make it better? I don't know, because I'm not, I'm not into that.
The state doesn't want to run the system at all.
Hey, Mike, you're, you're involved, and you probably understand.
And the other thing about Rutland is, it's in the flood plain, because when we had Irene or Sandy go through.
The dispatch got flooded.
They got flooded out, so that, that, this, that area is, one, the state doesn't want to control it anymore, doesn't want to run it. And two, that particular building you're talking about is in a flood.
That was built in floods.
But the state might have to set up some new locations, but they wouldn't have to have one in every county.
I don't, I don't think the state's gonna entertain that. Do you, Butch?
That ship has sailed. No. That ship has sailed. No. The state is not going to entertain that at all. They've been trying to disassociate themselves from us since twenty fifteen or twenty fourteen, thirteen, back, back then. The, one of the, one of the, uh, problems that we had is there was no money. Now they're, now they're off, they're going, hopefully going to be offering us a substantial amount of money to set up local dispatch centers. Uh, the, uh, yeah, so no, the ship has sailed to, to try to bring back what we had. Uh, we're going to, uh, we've been asked, or you all, you all have been asked to set up a dispatch center that will handle a certain amount of people. And I, I think before we, my, my suggestion might be, before we jump off the end of the bridge, I think the, uh, the folks that are meeting with Chief Empel in that group that they've put together, I've been discussing this quite a while. I think they got a few items that they need to iron out. Uh, where you put it, it's, I don't have a dog in that place for sure. But, uh, it's, it's going to have to happen soon.
It, it could actually go, Butch, out of state.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, with the microwaves and the computers, it could actually be picked up from somebody out of state.
Absolutely, absolutely. There's other, there's a lot of other options.
There was also some talk about possibly maybe Bennington County combining with Rutland County too. I don't know. I'll, I'll wait that.
Can I ask you some money question, Butch? Of, of this eight million dollars for startup, is that to be apportioned between Rutland region, Bennington region, and Northeast Kingdom? Or is there some more complicated way of dividing up that money?
I, I, I'm, I'm not sure, John. It's a question that, that I will ask. I'll have to get back to you on that. But I, I think you hit the nail on the head. It's going to be a forceful, uh, in some fashion to each region that has to get off the state's dispatch system. And I think currently that's Rutland Medical County and Essex Orleans and, but not Bomaile County.
Butch, I understand from the commissioner the other day that this money is going to be handled through grants. So in other words, if you set up a, a center, you're going to ask for a grant and they'll determine how much money you get to do your startup requirement. That was my understanding.
That's what we're hearing here. Uh, and, uh, I can follow up on that.
I believe.
The other thing.
I'll let John know and then he can, then he can, uh, get that out to you folks.
Butch, you mentioned the side judges. That's another thing that was discussed two back before this happened, was the side judges can set a rate. In other words, say Pittsburgh has three thousand residents, Rutland Town has fifteen thousand. You can do it per head because everybody's going to need these services, whether it's fire, rescue, police. There's a couple areas in the county which don't belong because they're over in Washington County. But that still doesn't negate the, the fact that they need our services, whether it's mutual aid.
That's the, uh,
Or whatever.
That's the question that the, uh, the, uh, group that, um, Chief Empel's working with are going to have to answer.
Yeah. How do we fund it?
How, how do we fund it? And then, then they, they would take that, um, by, according to the, uh, what we passed up here, they would take that, the side judges, to collect that funding, uh, from each individual town when they send you your current county, county assessment. So, well, whatever, uh, whatever the formation group comes up with, that's, that's the avenue, how to get money to that. And I would hope that they would form an LLC or some sort of a corporation to, to manage this. That's our next step. It's, uh, this has been, we've been fighting this off for a long time.
Well, I think one of the problems is you take the smaller town like Danby or somebody like that. I mean, you know.
That's why head tax makes it better.
Exactly what you were saying. I think it probably makes the most sense to, to do it that way. You're going to have less, obviously, less money to work with.
One, one other point. There's probably money, federal money, to set this thing up and get it up and running. But once that money is gone, are we going to be hurting to support it, hurting to maintain it?
That's one of the questions I've.
The cost could be un, does anybody, probably nobody can tell what the cost is going to be. And it could wind up being pretty heavy-duty. Maybe Butch has no idea how they're going to figure that.
Well, well, Joe, Joe, I, I, I think that the, the group will have a pretty good idea of what it's going to cost them to run a dispatch center based on how many chairs that they occupy. Uh, and, you know, because the biggest, biggest cost of the whole thing is people.
Yeah.
And the equipment is a small piece of the cost. It's people's cost. Three, three dispatch chairs is at the, is at least twelve, fifteen people have on the payroll. And, uh, that's, that's going to be a big expense. But I think that's in a formulation area that the group is going to have to make some decisions on. Then, 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 then you'll know for sure. There's no federal money, Joe. This, this is all state-run.
Okay.
I remember when, when this started back a while ago. Tom, you, you brought out the point that by losing the local control that we had, it might be more difficult for somebody Barry to dispatch somebody here in the town of Pittsburgh, let's say you're up in Sugar Hollow or something. You lost your local control and your local knowledge. Bringing that back into the county could have.
Well, it's going to be a plus. There's no question.
But can we, can we afford it?
Historical documents here, Joe, that in twenty fifteen, the state, uh, the, the fees, the dispatch fees for the town of Pittsburgh that's somewhere north of thirty-five thousand dollars a year.
Yeah.
Based on call volume. Uh, and other, Rutland Town was up around sixty thousand dollars a year. Brandon was in the forty to fifty, fifty thousand dollar a year volume. So that, those, and that was, I think, fifteen. Uh, and that's why, that's what we're trying to avoid. We, I don't, those, those, those numbers were, they were based on call volume and they were pulled out of the year. But they're probably, I don't know if they're accurate today. I doubt they're accurate. But that's what you're looking at.
Guy Modell.
I know. All right. Thanks for the updates. And did you say you don't have the Zoom link for tomorrow's meeting yet?
I hadn't got it.
Okay. Well, are you going to send it to John?
Yes, yeah.
Will you send that to me?
Soon as I get it, I will.
Um, yes, and I don't know how long I'll be here. I might have to bug out because it's snow. We'll see.
All right.
But you can send to Alicia as well. I'll send you her email address.
All right. That'd be great. Yeah, I'd like to listen in.
Yeah.
And Billy, I never heard back from Luis Goslin.
You didn't? Okay. I can call him tomorrow and I'll call. I'll ask him if he's going to send the link because he's the one that usually sends the link.
And, and just as a side note, um, the rumor mill is that the sheriff's department doesn't have any interest in this and needed us in Rollin City.
Huh. Okay.
That, that's, that's scuttlebutt, that is it?
Yeah.
But that's what we're hearing.
Okay.
I've heard the same thing, so.
All right.
From different sources.
Okay. Anybody have anything else before we move on from this? All right. Thank you.
No, I have nothing yet on it.
Okay.
I'll call him tomorrow if he's going to send it or let you know one way or another if it's going or canceled or.
Okay.
You might want to keep the police here for our cruiser discussion.
Yeah, we still, we got you on the agenda for, uh, one, one more thing. But Butch, before you need to go, we also have you and Stephanie on the agenda for, um, their redistricting update. Do you want to do that before you have to go?
Yeah, that would be great if you could. Then we can, then I can go home and Stephanie can go home.
Okay.
Come up to your home.
Yeah.
Um, I can, I can start, but, uh, you know, Butch has obviously been in the forefront of this, um, with the town of Pittsburgh and, um, the, um, and, and so I, I'd sent the links about the committees. The, the Government Operations Committee was, um, hearing from the BCA's about the redistricting this week. And, and Butch, um, did testify at that committee meeting and I, I went and attended that as well. But, so you probably, you know all the, the circumstances, right? So that the first legislative, uh, proportionate board map was put Pittsburgh with Proctor. And the second, the alternate map had it with Pittsburgh and Chittenden. And then that map went to, um, when they went to the Government Operations Committee, they chose the second map. And then they are looking at all the, again, the Government Operations Committee is looking at all the towns again and looking at all the reconfigurations and taking some of the work that the, the legislative portion of board did. But my understanding is that not since nineteen sixty-five have they ever accepted one of these maps. And, um, so, but it looks to me like, um, you know, Butch did a great job of, of advocating for the town and, um, that Pittsburgh should go with Proctor. And I, I think that it, it looks like from my rumor mill that I've heard, it looks pretty good. Um, Butch, do you have any other comments about that?
Oh, Stephanie, that was, that was a great comment. And, and yes, uh, Stephanie, you were there to keep, make sure that I was being honest and thankful about that.
You've got to keep an eye on some people.
So thank you. Uh, yeah, we did, we did, we did advocate for the, uh, the decision, you know, the Pittsburgh DCA, which was a, not an unanimous vote, but I think it was a twelve-one vote to go with Pittsburgh Proctor. The, we were disappointed, uh, when the, uh, the LED maps came out differently than what you commented on. And, uh, so we did testify yesterday. Uh, the committee was receptive and kind. This is my second time through redistricting. And, uh, I, even though they were very receptive to a Pittsburgh-Proctor district, we will know exactly what happens the day that the bill gets approved.
There, there was some, there was some, I'm sorry, Butch, I mean, there was some discussion about Pittsburgh with Sudbury. They asked Butch about that and, you know, what, how that would, how that would work out. And there is some history over that, that combination.
Yeah, yeah.
So, but I did just, I, before I came to this meeting, I got in touch with one of the members of the, of the Government Operations Committee to see what their timeline was. And it looks like they're shooting for the end of February to come up with the final maps.
Do you know what they're specifically looking at, like when they're considering Chittenden and Sudbury over Proctor? Like what their rationale is?
You know, so, oh, go ahead, Pittsburgh.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Yeah, so I, so my, you know, I think they're looking, they're looking at population is the first one, right? So they want to make sure there's a population of about forty-one hundred people with a deviation, a ten percent deviation. So they're trying to look at that, looking at contiguous towns. Um, and then on top of that, there's multiple factors. Like, you know, is there a relationship between these two towns? Is there history between the two towns? Is, are the towns in the same school district? Are, so whatever, they just want to make a, make sure there's like a common, a common, like, connection.
Yep.
And, and, you know, I, 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 Butch talked about it, but I think there's a really strong connection between Proctor and Pittsburgh because of the marble industry. And so there's a long history of the towns, of, of, of the towns having some of that connection. And it's, you know, stands today with the Army of Being, you know, the, a, a major employer, um, in the area. Butch, do you have anything else to add about that?
No, you're right, Steph. Uh, they, they weigh various different things, uh, and they, they think about that. The most important thing is, is population and not deviating five, more than five percent above or five percent below, which is the ten percent, uh, ideal district size. That's, uh, um, that's in statute. So they have to, they try to stick to that for, for the best of their ability. Uh, and then, you know, they have a, a really cool map. And you can see just a different, a, a different district. They plug that in and the map goes crazy. And every time it's, it's like, uh, you, you push something, you push something here, some pops up over there. So that's what we're fighting right now. They're hearing Addison County.
Sounds like we're running.
Las Vegas.
But we'll, we'll know for sure by the end, I'm pretty sure by the end of February. This is really compressed.
Yeah.
The time we did this, uh, the Government Operations Committee did a statewide tour the summer before we started on this. But they were unable to do this because the federal census wasn't done. It was very late coming out, so we could not do this statewide tour. And they're, they're missing that. And, and I talked to a, a member of that committee today and they really miss being able to get out and talk to the citizens and get their opinion. But we just don't have time. By, by the constitution and by law, we have to have this done this year.
But both Butch and I have been advocating, and I think it, it really helps to have legislators talk to these members of these committees, of this committee because they, um, you know, they don't know the, the history of these towns, right? Like, so they, they know their own regions really well, but they, but they're making decisions for the whole state. So I think it's, you know, it's really important that, that, you know, Butch talks to, to the committee members and I talk to the committee members and we make sure that something is, you know, the appropriate combination is, is, is set up for the Pittsburgh district.
If we hear any rumors, we'll let you know.
All right. Thanks. Does anybody have any questions for Butch or Stephanie? All right. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you for accommodating us, bro.
Absolutely.
Take care. Good seeing you.
Take care. Um, okay, and then let's jump back to, or jump, yeah, uh, update on the purchase of the new police cruiser. So we had some, uh.
Yeah, there was some discussion, um,
Happened there, right?
Between the, the chief and I. I learned that Dodge will not be building any Durangos this year. And that was the model that the chief had proposed and the select board had approved at a recent meeting. Therefore, the chief is proposing a second pickup, um, truck cruiser, a Dodge fifteen-fifty crew cab four by four.
Yes.
Um, the chief reports it could be about a thousand dollars less than the sedan and would have comparable costs to outfit as those of a sedan. He thinks he can squeeze it into the police garage.
I got the other one in there. Just to make sure.
All right.
They generally get a little bigger as time goes on.
Well. It fits. It fits.
All right. Perfect.
They didn't have an option.
So I don't know that you need to take any action because you've given them a certain dollar appropriation, but just wanted to make sure that you're comfortable with the truck.
All right. Sounds good. Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, I mean, if they're making the thing, you can't get it.
Well, when it becomes available in twenty twenty-three, it will either be a V-six or a Leger.
Oh.
No, we don't want that. I'll make a motion that we, uh, change that to a Pucktop rather than a sedan.
Okay.
Second it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. All right. Let's see.
Bye, Bob.
All right. Why don't we, uh, introduce, introduction of, uh, the new Omea plant manager?
Yeah, I'll, I'll go first. So my name is Wayne Loomer. I'm the, uh, I'm the outgoing plant manager. So I, my last day was Monday, so I know technically no longer the plant manager. But I didn't want to give, it's been a long time since we've been here. So COVID has kept us out of, uh, these meetings for a long, long time. I think the last time we were here was much, maybe early two, early twenty or something like that. But, I mean, the pandemic came around and Omea was able to survive that pretty well. We were able to run and keep things going as, as is. And we had our spade of COVID issues there. But, you know, we had good protocols and kept the employees safe and did everything that we should have done well. And so we did have with the latest Omicron, um, we'd had a few more people out for the most part. But it was a good year. You know, both years actually turned out to be pretty well in terms of business growth. We did see our business change quite a bit. And I'm not sure if the pandemic accelerated or if it was just part of the business cycle as is. We used to supply mostly materials to the paper industry. And the paper industry is a mature industry. It's been essentially not growing as fast as, as, you know, it used to be. And industrial growth and plastics polymers, all these other things are growing way faster. So we've seen that change in the, in the, in the business as well. So the last two years, Omea's invested millions of dollars in our plant here to change the business model, to enable us to meet these new market needs. So we have introduced new mark, new products, even in the, in the paper side. Because we're still competitive there. We still own a majority of the market share. We still want to defend it. So we're still doing that. But we spent a lot of money in bringing in new products to grow. And so as a result, we've added maybe at least five or six headcount in the last year or so to our plant. Um, of course, now we're not, like all other companies, we're, we're also affected by the supply chain issues right now. So we have still trouble getting spare parts, getting certain supplies. But fortunately, you know, Omea is a big company, worldwide company. We have resources in Cincinnati that are helping us secure to get some of these resources. And so we've been able to do, I think, reasonably well within the pandemic and were able to do pretty well this last year. So. Um, I'll, now, John, John is a new plant manager, but he's been here before. He was here for two, so, so years before as assistant plant manager with me. And, uh, I'll have him tell a little bit about. And I'll have him tell a little bit about himself and the way he comes on.
Oh, thank you, Wayne. Thank you, John, for the invitation and the chance to introduce myself. And I'm happy to be here tonight and have big shoes to fill, so that I will do the best I possibly can. I am from Wisconsin. I was born and raised there, small town of Greenville. If you look it up, it's a farming community and, yeah, not so much different than this place here. So, I feel very comfortable here. As Wayne mentioned, the plant has had some changes, but it continues to evolve and we continue to strive to be efficient. And we still need people. So, we're still looking for some more folks to help us out to, to make these new dry products, which we're selling more and more of. So, it really looks good for the future and we hope to make it even more profitable and have, enjoy our community relations. So, thanks for having me.
I'd like to just mention what a great community, we talk about community relations, what a great neighbor Omea has been to Pittsburgh. They've been wonderfully supportive of the police and fire departments.
Especially the fire department.
They've, they've supported any number of good causes throughout the region. They've supported Pittsburgh veterans, for example, with annual donation of flags, and that's very much appreciated. Green Up Day is another way that Omea has stepped up and helped the region. And they've been very good and transparent about cooperating with the members of the community issues team. Whenever we have issues of noise or, or dust or other things that might be an impact on, in Omea on the community, they're very good at resolving those and working with the neighbors one-on-one and through the community issues team. So, I just want to tip my hat to Wayne for being such a good neighbor and we hope we have lots of more good relations to have, to come in the future with John Shaw at the helm.
Absolutely, thank you.
Awesome, thanks, congratulations.
Thank you, both of you.
Nice to be here.
Yes.
Thank you, gentlemen, appreciate it.
Great.
We appreciate you fellows coming.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Take care.
Have a good night.
Thanks for coming in, fellas.
Watch your step, and thanks very much, guys. Good luck.
We're just skipping around all over the place here. Okay.
Come on, get us together.
I know. All right, Lisa, property reassessment plans.
Can I ask you a quick question, Madam Chair?
Yes.
We do have one or two very short items which include visitors.
Sure, I guess I was just trying to get, you know, people out of the room if you didn't want to be in the room.
This might be a more involved discussion, I imagine.
Okay.
But that's completely your call.
Is that okay with you? Okay.
I think it's fine. So, Miguel is available, maybe just check in with her?
Yeah. You're okay with hanging in there for a minute? Okay, great. Let's see, so then probably, I'm guessing.
Beth Serradarian.
Beth Serradarian. That's the coin drop for Rutland County Humane Society.
Hello, everybody.
Hey there.
Hi.
Hi. As I think I know most of you, but I'm Beth Serradarian, Pittsburgh resident and also the executive director of Rutland County Humane Society. And thank you all for your support in the past, especially the last couple of years with the coin drop that we've done on Route 7, right in front of Lothrope. Last year, we made a little over $4,000. So, it was a great, great opportunity for us. And I was hoping that we could do another one again this year. I was hoping for the Saturday of Columbus State Weekend, I think it's October 8th, from 10:00 to 2:00 at that same spot.
10:00 to 2:00. Sounds good to me. No, nor do I.
I get approval from the state.
Yeah, she's been, she knows. Yeah, she's, yeah, okay.
So, I make a motion that we allow this.
Start looking.
Bye.
Say aye.
And of course, Beth, you'll need to find some form, fill it out, and we can have Chief Warful sign off on behalf of the town.
Awesome, absolutely. Thanks a bunch, everybody, appreciate it.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Thank you.
And then we have Donna Wilson, who might want to talk about the historic marker.
Yeah, Donna, what, the historical marker? Oh, you're on mute.
I know.
Okay. Sorry, your lips moving.
I did get the packet out to the state yesterday. And everyone should have a copy of the narrative. So, they'll take a look at that and get back in contact with me to, to make sure everything is okay. And once they approve that, there'll be an unveiling of this historic marker at Pittsburgh Mills.
How big is the sign projected to be? This is a lot.
There's a standard, I think it's a standard size.
Yeah, it's amazing. They have, they want proof of every conversation that people have, so.
Yeah.
It's a.
No, this is great, though.
That narrative, they wanted that narrative in writing, that's why it's like that.
Okay.
And notes and bibliography are on there.
Yep.
Would it be helpful if this?
I think it had to be under 6, 765 words.
Oh, okay.
Wow.
Yeah.
Would it be helpful if the select board were to send a letter endorsing it and you could pass that along, or is it not really needed?
I don't think it's needed, but that would be fine. You know, to endorse something that's going on in town is definitely appropriate.
I know, I would like to. Even if I don't have to, it'd be nice to, it'd be nice to endorse this, because it's really.
We don't have to.
That's Fiona.
I can authorize John to write something up on our behalf.
Okay.
Good.
Happy to do it.
All right. Just make the motion, or are we just?
No, consent.
Consent, okay. All right, thanks, Donna.
Okay.
Okay. Lisa.
Okay, so should I bring this up to speed a little bit where we left off with this?
Sure.
I can't remember exactly when it was, but it was sometime this fall. I presented a proposal and the board had asked me to go out and see if I could find a competing quote, and I was not able to do that. I ran into at least four different dead ends of companies that used to do it. One of them was Vision, as suggested by, I think, John as well as Linda Trask, that John Ujier back years ago had suggested that we hire Vision to do it. They haven't done personal appraisal, personal property appraisals in a number of years. I think shortly thereafter, they gave John a quote way back when. And so, they referred me to a few other people, same kind of story. Didn't get much input from the state, other than that they have Gail on their, their list with her company of their approved appraiser list, which is a pretty short list, as you know, of appraisers to do townwide reappraisals. And some of them, like Sansucci and like Gail's company, only do a certain, you know, a certain field or a portion of reappraisals. So, Gail is our best candidate.
Okay.
And she reworked her bids. You have the, the latest that she has there. I will tell you, there's a slight difference in number of parcels. She bid on 70 parcels and I have 74 on the 2021 list.
Okay.
And that would be my, well, not really, no blame really. It's that we started this conversation with Gail and I think I gave her the 2020 grand list, because we've been talking about this for, for quite some time. So, we'd really like to get this done for, for 2022. So, we, we need to get moving on it. So, I'm hoping that Gail and I can answer any other questions that you have and, and move forward. One of the things I think you had questions about were Gail's prior experience. So, you know, I certainly can speak to that. I met Gail more than 10 years ago when she was working for the town of Rutland. She's been working for Rutland Town as well as Rutland City for, I don't know, Gail, how many decades? Long time?
Since 1990.
Yeah. And, and Proctor before that.
Okay.
So, she's very familiar with, with Omea as a company and appraising, and of course, Rutland Town, Rutland City each have a GE plant. So, you know, the complexity of this job is certainly something she can handle. I think unless you want me to answer other questions right away, I'd like Gail to introduce herself to you.
Yeah, I'd like to hear from Gail.
Thank you for having me. I appreciate being here. So, I'm a Connecticut resident and I've been in this business of appraising business personal property since 1981. I started with a large revaluation company and then in 1991 formed G and K Associates. And that is the company that I started with in the town of Rutland. And I've been there, as I said, since about, in the 90s, early 90s. We started in the town of Rutland and I've been there ever since. Then somewhere in between, I'll share with you, in 2003, I was approached and I took the job full-time with the city of Hartford, Connecticut for 18 years. And we had 4,000 businesses there. We have a large insurance company there and we have medical buildings there and of course, power plants and manufacturing. And so, I retired there in July of this past summer. And so, that's why I'm available to even assist with the town of Pittsburgh. So, if there's any other questions about, you know, maybe some of the plants or other places I've been involved with, with appraisals, gosh, you know, when you're working in New England and you're working in states like Maine and Vermont and Rhode Island and Massachusetts, where they have a concentration of business personal property, I mean, obviously, you're running into a lot of the same types of businesses that you all have in Pittsburgh. So, if there's any other questions, I could answer more in depth about the type of quarries I've been to or, you know, if that's the concern or any other types of businesses, I'm sure I can answer those questions for you.
I don't know if I have any other questions.
I was curious, how long would your contract be for to do the personal property?
So, there's deadlines. So, we would have, you know, there's a start date and an end date, right? So, once, as Lisa was pointing out, I mean, the sooner you get started, because what we want to do is meet the grand list at deadline times, right, for commitment. But I don't fall off, but once I've been to your town and if I am the person, I just want you to know that I don't drop off. I mean, if you have a taxpayer that has a question six months from now, I mean, we get calls and we take care of them. It's, you know, it's, it's not like I just turn it over and say, "Good luck. We're in for the long haul."
So, what is the cost for your contracted services?
So, we try, yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, I didn't know, I guess I didn't realize. What is the cost for your services to do the personal property? Like, is it per year?
It's per, it's actually what we try to do is get a preliminary number, like Lisa provided to me. You know, like she said, there's approximately something like 70 to 75 accounts on your grand list already. So, then what we try to do is bid on, you know, give you an idea of what it would cost per parcel or per business. And it is, it is a proposal. So, you know, what I try to do is give you something based on my expertise and my experience about how long it takes me to do a full measuring list on any type of business. I'm giving you a ballpark average cost per business, so that I can give you something to consider.
I think maybe to, just to clarify, this is a complete revale. It's analogous to a full townwide reappraisal, which to my knowledge, Pittsburgh has never had an outside professional do their personal property accounts. So, yeah, she's, Gail is really starting from scratch and, you know, we may want her to come in and do updates in, in subsequent years or maybe for some parcels. But to get a start, we just don't know whether we're missing accounts. We are probably going to find out and Gail can tell, tell, talk about this from her experience. When you do a reappraisal for real estate, you typically find some that you're over assessing, some that you're under assessing, and many that are, you know, somewhere in the middle. And you just don't know. The inventory is, you know, this is a voluntary reporting basis. So, we don't even have the, the same standards of, with real estate, we have some universal standards of measuring a house and calculating square footage and acreage of the land. This is really more, really starting from scratch. I mean, I, I strongly suspect that we have, and John and I talked about this, you know, we probably have a few of the mom and pops that are, you know, maybe over reporting, you know, or under depreciating versus some of the, you know, the leasing companies are reporting a very low number that may be depreciated way below net book, which is not what the statute calls for. And I'm not qualified to judge that. So, this is what we want Gail to do.
I'd say a couple of questions about the, about the fee. How much do we take in each year in personal property taxes? Just to get an idea of how much we're investing to collect that and going forward.
Yes, yes. To put it in perspective, we have, collected a total in taxes in 2021, or in theory, we collected that, that was what we billed, 233,946.
Okay. And while we have an idea of what it might cost per parcel, is there any way to quantify or guesstimate what we think we're being asked to approve in terms of a fee for Gail's services? Or maybe is there a way to put some kind of not-to-exceed number on this, so the board has some sense that we're not writing a blank check?
Well, Gail can speak to that. My understanding is that her quote of, let me quote it exactly, 33,600 is for 70 parcels and the additional amount would be for additional accounts that we might add.
Okay.
Is that fair to say, Gail?
Yeah, yeah, yes, that is fair. Because this, well, let me back up a bit. It's, give you an example. So, last summer, got involved with a town up in Maine, had not been visited, no one had been there for 40 years. This was a full measuring list where you're actually going in honestly with a blank piece of paper, introducing yourself to the business owner, explaining that this is mandated state law that they need to be filing their declaration of personal property to their town, which of course would be Pittsburgh here. And you're actually trying to educate, you know, a taxpayer about what it is that they're supposed to be doing as a responsibility to the town. Now, having said that, there were 291 accounts on this list and we had over 600 when I got done. So, I just, and if we're not finished, I've been invited to come back again for a second year to try to just catch up with maybe some of the home businesses that we haven't, we didn't get a chance to get to, because I don't think they realized how much was actually out there. And we're talking about landscapers, construction workers, you know, there's a whole world out there, you know, especially with computers now. You have a lot of people that can just work from home. They don't have to be in your commercial areas.
My other question.
I think I, I take a look at it and say, that's, it's great. Yes, because as a former Lister, it was very difficult to ascertain what was going on. And you wanted to be fair to everyone, so you're getting one carpenter, but then you're not getting another one.
Exactly.
And it just, I mean, I think this will be great to get a good baseline of what's going on. Great job.
And is there an idea as to how often a town should do a reappraisal of personal property? Is it akin to real estate or should it be done more often? And maybe, do you have an idea of what percentage of the overall brand-new assessment are we, that we're doing? How, how much less a, a follow-up would be in a few years?
So, Gail and I did discuss a ballpark for an update and she gave the range of $7,000 to $8,000 to do an update. And that might be something that we decide behooves us. I don't think we'll, we'll know the answer to that until she completes the work for this reappraisal. You do do that for Rutland Town, right, Gail, where it's up?
Right.
You update all of the accounts every year?
Every single year. Every single one of them is looked at, you know, questions come up. I mean, you have companies that constantly changing assets. You have to remember, they're buying stuff, they're deleting stuff, you know, they grow. I mean, so you have to make sure that you're updating and maintaining that particular account every single year. You know, you have Comcast, correct? That's cable? So, you need to know how many lines of cable that you actually have. You need to know how many subscribers you. of cable that you actually have. You need to know how many subscribers you have. I mean, all of that is part of the cost of that cable and, you know, cable in your town. So there's a lot to it. There's a lot of different pieces. If you can think of it this way, when you go into a regular, a CBS or a grocery store, I want you to think about this, every single thing that you see in that store, I make a note of. I make sure that you're going to get a complete listing turned around to you, where you're going to actually see what that particular company or individual is being assessed for. They get an itemized list back, so that they know exactly what it is they're being assessed on. And they also have a chance to go over those values with me. It's very time-consuming. The first, you know, like Lisa was saying, to get the ball rolling and to get this started and to get a basis, the first year is always the hardest. It's the more, the most work is.
We have a dollar, the new dollar store, that's going to be one. Gail and I also talked about one benefit is sometimes it's a little bit of a blurred line between real estate and personal property. Like, an account I picked up this year was the Abenaki, you know, shipping container leasing. And, you know, that, that one, it may be a little bit ambiguous which, which category that falls in. So, so Gail and I can work on that together, make sure we're not double-dipping that we're assessing it. In Pittsburgh, we assess it either way, so it's just putting it in the right category. Things like under, you know, below-ground oil or gas tanks for the, you know, the gas stations. Sometimes those aren't assessed by towns at all, because they believe them to be personal property. I've usually picked those up as real estate. But, you know, there's a lot of things like that that are gray areas.
Oh, I mean, I'm looking on here. You've got Green Mountain Power. Now is that power lines, lights, that kind of stuff? Or what does?
They, they do claim personal property. I'd have to look at their inventory. They don't have, like, offices here, but it may be software and hardware equipment. Do you, are you familiar with that?
But what about, what about power lines?
Well, the power lines are assessed as real estate, per statute.
Well, no, I was looking at Velco isn't here, so that's why I was wondering.
Well, that's an interesting question. And Velco is working on a new substation by Omea, too.
Well, but they've also got the lines, which have considerable value.
So they perhaps should be an account here.
Well, that's what I'm bringing up. I think you're going to find there's a lot of things that are missing here.
Right. In West Rutland, I don't pick those things up, because we don't assess for personal property. So same thing with Comcast. Comcast in towns that don't do personal property, they only pay into the ed tax. We don't get anything municipally for it. You get it on the municipal side.
Is solar personal property, or is it real estate?
Solar is generally considered real estate. So I don't know about leased panels on somebody's roof, but typically 50 KW is less, is tax exempt in Vermont anyway, so it probably wouldn't matter, you know, unless you had more than 50 KW on a commercial rooftop that happened to be leased. I, I suppose never say never.
The state has a bunch of probably rules and regulations that you have to follow in determining these values, don't they?
In personal property, the state is kind of hands-off on it. They, you know, PVNR is the only agency that they have, to my knowledge. You know, I mean, there's statutes on, on the personal property and how you can depreciate it, you know, how the taxpayer is allowed to depreciate it. But as far as, you know, the numerous amounts of guidance and trainings offered through PVNR certifications of appraisers, there's really none of that. PVR has been kind of hands-off on the, the personal property. And I don't believe there's any other agency with the tax department that helps with personal property on, on that side.
Years ago, first April, a Lister had to go around and count how many head of cattle a farmer had.
Yeah, I guess your job is still kind of like that, yeah. You know, they took it out of the Lister handbook, and I always liked that little piece of history. Then they started it out with, that's how Listers started. You were literally counting tie stalls in the, in a barn. Possibly.
Today, do you have to tally up the livestock on a farm or not? That's not that?
Livestock isn't, yeah, yeah, isn't considered real estate or personal property.
Because they used them.
Get as many cows as you want, Joe, tax-free.
You can now, but years ago, if you had two team horses, they wouldn't know about it.
Yes, yes, the old grant list are kind of, kind of interesting to me.
That was the only personal property a lot of people had. You know, there wasn't anything, nobody had a computer, nobody had a car, nobody, I mean, you know, there was nothing else. So, yeah.
I think for one, this is going to be money well-spent. It's going to be a self-back committee thing's over. So I would make a motion legal along with it.
All right.
In terms of discussion, there is $155,000 in the reappraisal fund.
That we're set in pretty good shape on that.
I'd think so, because we're talking about a reappraisal on real estate in maybe two years or three years. By then, that fund will be right up again.
So that, that fund does stay separately? It's not in the general fund, it's its own fund? Okay.
Didn't used to have that fund, but that's been put in play quite a while ago, Neil.
Yes, yes. They're talking about increasing the per parcel payment, but we'll see.
All right, all in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Congratulations and good luck, Gail.
Yes, thank you, Gail.
I'm delighted, I'm delighted. I think it's going to be great. I'm looking forward to it.
We're hoping so.
Go get to work, Gail.
All right.
Thank you.
Still, still standing after 40 years, haven't been stoned yet.
You must be good at ducking.
I know.
She's quick.
Yeah, that or she doing something right.
Yes.
Oh, that too.
I, I would leave, unless there's any discussion about the GIS and ARPA funds, anything that I need to stay forward with?
We are going to discuss ARPA funds, but just kind of generally.
We had originally, I had originally-
Well, then I'll just put in that plug that maybe rather than taking that out of reappraisal, you might want to consider that. It's, it's been used in other towns for that.
Oh, the ARPA funds to pay for this?
There's no GIS.
No, to pay for the GIS.
Oh, GIS.
Yeah, which, yeah, which is smaller expenditure, but, you know, it, it really is, it's a service to all your taxpayers. It's, you know, it's become, geez, almost every town in Rutland County has it.
How many years has it been since Pittsburgh did a reappraisal?
Of real estate?
Ten.
Eight or 10, yeah.
2016.
I think about eight years.
So six years.
Yeah, yeah. So every 10 years is, is pretty-
Love you here soon.
Pretty standard. All right.
Thank you, guys. Thanks for your night.
Thanks. John, did you forget to put Linda on our agenda?
Um, that's an executive session discussion.
No, I know. So I just wasn't sure if you were, you're just going to wait till-
Mine, everyone.
I'm fine.
Good night.
Good night, Gail.
Okay. I know. All right, let's do, yeah, let's discuss the potential uses of the ARPA funds.
Yes, obviously, this could take, you know, hours upon hours of discussion, and no doubt it will, over the next three years, because you do have three years to commit the money, and another two years to actually spend it. But what I wanted to do on my way out the door is to at least tee up some ideas that you might consider as you start evaluating it and taking public input into, into heart. And so what I've done is I've put together a list of capital projects that at some point or another, people have suggested to me, or I've thought of. And it's certainly not an exclusive list. There's probably plenty of things that I haven't mentioned that you might want to consider. So I just really wanted to get the conversation started. And with that said, I know that Sean Good, who was here last time, talking about his poor internet situation, had asked whether the select board was in a position to commit to making an ARPA funding payment retroactively in his situation, if he were to go ahead and invest in better internet and not wait for the OCCUD to bring fiber to everybody in town in a few years. And I told him that I'd be happy to present that question to the select board. I suspect you might not want to commit at this early stage. But if you do, I'll let Sean know.
Okay.
Not till we know how many people this involves. It could eat up all of our funds and they'd be gone.
Well, we do know, but I don't, I didn't get that final number. I did get that when you sent me the email of-
We know how many people. We don't know the cost.
Yeah, and he, and he's not asking-
Way out in the middle of nowhere.
Well, no, not the cost, but I mean, I think the only way if we were to do that would be to do a blanket, like, X amount of dollars per person as like a subsidy towards what they would have to pay, right? Because you're not going to pay every, the whole thing.
For his situation, I think he said that if his neighbor and he did it, there'd be about 25 or 3,500 bucks apiece. And he was asking for maybe $1,000 from the town. But as I say, I think Selectman Mills has a very good point, that you need to have a, a thought-through policy, or these individual requests could be devilish.
Oh, no, for sure. But I think we, I think with broadband, I mean, that's in the one of the top of my, I think we should get more concrete information about it, just because. And also, we don't have anything for economic development. I know revolving loan fund is something we've discussed in the past. I would love to see us have a revolving loan fund.
That's something to consider, whether we can use ARPA funds for that. We certainly, or at least I don't know if it's anything certain, but we've been told that the smart thing to do with ARPA, and this is from the governor himself, is you don't want to maybe do anything programmatic. In other words, hiring people, because then that's a cost that you can't sustain. So, but, but as opposed to hiring an economic development person, a sinking fund or revolving fund could be something to contemplate. I will ask the ARPA gurus at VLCT whether they have any guidance on that particular issue.
Okay.
Yeah.
I know, because I feel in one of the, in one of the VLCT Zoom meetings, I'm pretty sure that was an allowable use of ARPA funds.
I'd be happy to get that confirmed.
So, okay.
Yeah, I think I, yeah, I think I remember mentioning that.
I know, I have pages and pages of notes somewhere on all those many ARPA things.
And of course, things have changed remarkably, because there used to be only categories of eligibility. Now, there seems to be a blanket ability to use these funds for any governmental purpose, up to $10 million. So that covers most of Vermont towns. So I will, I will ask about that specific thing.
So, and I, so I do know that there is more flexibility, but it's, it's governmental, so, like, if an organization in town was looking for funding, helping, I mean, what, so-
Well, I don't, I don't think that that would be prohibited, but it's certainly something also to consider, because I know we have the village farm folks-
That's why I'm at, yeah, that's a segue into that.
Who might be wanting to talk about our ARPA funds. And for the next meeting, I'd be happy to run any scenario that I hear about tonight by them, because I think, one, the government can, can assign some funds to a nonprofit. I think that's the answer. But I'm going to get that for you for the next meeting.
Yep, absolutely. Lori, did you have anything that you wanted to say about the farm? Hi.
You have to unmute, Lori.
Okay, hi, everybody.
Hi.
It's good to see you, but you're all like quarter of an inch tall.
Yeah, I know.
Hi, John. The Pittsburgh Village Farm is continuing to move towards its dream of having the building become part of our, our assets in town. Specifically, we would like to have an early childhood education center, because the state needs that. There's additional funding passed, certainly what ARPA would provide, for childcare spots in the town, and especially in our counties. So to get going on that would allow us to reach to other funders as we go forward. And also, other funders are very interested in whether or not a full town supports an endeavor that people who are writing grants put forward. So should the select board agree to some amount of money to support the ongoing development of the Pittsburgh Village Farm, we would be able to list that, and it would demonstrate that the town is also committed to what we're up to, up there. So we're very interested in coming along to talk with you at the appropriate time about what our, our plans are for continuing the development of the Pittsburgh Village Farm as a community place. We have had events almost every month of the year so far on our land, but the project really will be richer if we can get going on the house renovations. Do you have some questions?
Does anyone have any questions for Lori? No. I mean, I guess maybe just generally, was there like a general number?
No, you know, we wanted to know if the funds would be released to an organization like the Pittsburgh Village Farm. Once we have that confirmed, we'll immediately put our heads together and make a request. We have a letter already drafted to you folks that we're holding until we have confirmation that the money could be used for such project. And at that point, we will ask John to put us on the agenda, and we'll come along and show you what our thoughts are.
All right, great.
Okay?
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thanks so very much for hearing us. We'll see you soon again, we hope.
All right.
And John, you'll be in touch with us once you have some clarity on that?
I will. I'm hoping it'll just be a few days now.
Okay, thanks so very much.
Okay, let's see.
Now, we had seen, I think, Rick McGuire touch base-
I told him that when we were ready, we would call him.
Okay, good.
Oh, perfect.
Because he was-
Yeah, no, thank you. That's great. That helps. I know, I did, I was like, wait, the R left. I saw the R was up there. Okay. Consider seasonal posting of town highways, the same roads as-
Yes.
Every year.
Yes. Nothing controversial. The key is when Sean thinks the conditions are right, he will have the, or chat. He'll have, he'll have the latitude to do that, once you, once you've approved it.
I'll make a motion that we do that.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, town meeting preparations?
Yeah, just very briefly, on Wednesday, February 16th, two weeks from today, at nine o'clock in this room, there'll be a town report dedication ceremony. It'll be hybrid. We will ask each of the two honorees to have a couple of people here, and everyone else via Zooming, perhaps along with the reporters. But of course, any selectmen who'd like to be here or Zoom are certainly welcome as well. Monday, February 28th, we will have a, a budget discussion, a virtual select board meeting, with Q and A available to town residents via Zoom and dial-in options. That'll also take place in this room, with Kelly hosting the Zoom meeting. On Tuesday, March 1st, voting will take place at the firehouse between 7:00 AM and 7:00 PM. All residents who are eligible to vote will be sent a Australian ballot by mail. They can be returned at any time prior to 7:00 PM on March 1st at the town offices. But also, on voting day, you can bring it into the firehouse between 7:00 and 7:00. Finally, I plan to reach out to Alicia and Joe to prepare for their budget presentations for that February 28th meeting. And of course, we'll have our usual special select board meeting about 20 minutes before kickoff, to handle any last-minute questions or concerns.
What was the town report dedication date again?
February 16th.
16th.
At 9:00 AM.
It's a Wednesday.
What time on the 28th?
6:10 is, would be ideal to come for our special select board meeting.
So 6:30 is the meeting.
6:30 is the meeting.
He's just coming right up. Okay.
Yeah.
How did that happen? And then?
Pittsburgh Day.
Oh, Pittsburgh Day. I know, I'm trying to see, but I don't have crosswalk yet.
Last year, Madam Chair, we held it on a Saturday during the Labor Day weekend.
Yep.
And that, this, that day, this year would be Saturday, September 3rd, if you wanted to do that again.
I have no-
I thought, I thought we had a good turnout. I thought it was a good time to have it.
Maybe more stable weather, too. In August, we always had showers.
A lot of people, I mentioned it was a long weekend and, you know, people took the Saturday to be there and then they give two days to do.
To do what they want.
Yeah, that was a great time.
Well attended.
By the way, the folks at Village Farm have once again offered to host any or all of the event.
Yes, I got that email from Baird.
Yeah, so if you have any thoughts along those lines, just let us know and we can up the discussion.
I would make a motion that we do it on September 3rd again.
Okay.
Second it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
There you go, date.
Yeah. Totally watered, right?
It'll go in the newsletter because they finish that tomorrow morning. They've had waiting in, and I'll just say where.
Details pending.
Yes, exactly.
Well, yeah, at least.
Location.
Look for April, Aprils for more.
Perfect. Good.
Last thing on new business was meeting schedule. We had discussed possibly altering our times of meetings so that they didn't conflict with the school board. I don't know what everyone else thinks. I'd like to reach out to them first before we think about changing hours.
Yeah, I like ours myself.
Because I know.
You know, if the Tuesdays are, I won't be here.
Yeah.
What kind of, what kind of reach out did you have?
Tuesdays are bad for me, too.
I mean.
To ask them to change theirs?
Just to ask if that's even a possibility, because I mean, theirs.
Well, I don't blame you.
Is a lot newer.
After 21 years.
You know, obviously.
You can ask. I mean, worst case, we change ours to the second and fourth instead of first and third.
Well, Hank's not going to show up.
So we should get a committee meeting like we do.
Tuesdays and Thursdays.
Might be Tuesday and Thursday.
I will make that inquiry and I'll let you know at the next meeting.
Okay.
Um, I don't mind making it either if you want, it's up to you. We could talk about it later if you want. I don't mind reaching out. Outgoing superintendent, too.
Well, that would be.
That's true.
I think I mentioned that. Don't we do so?
Maybe should be more, more open to suggestion.
Hey.
I know I am.
Haven't noticed.
All right, and then I think lastly, and this is going to be mostly an executive session, unless there's any other.
We'll see you later. Thank you, everyone.
Take care. Have a good night.
Take care.
Be in touch on, yeah, on the meeting.
The Zoom meeting, awesome. Yeah, thank you, appreciate it.
Thanks.
Wouldn't be a long drawn out process.
Yeah, I know, that's, I just want to.
What it is.
Yeah.
I just wanted to be, I wanted to be on the committee just to protect the town, you know.
Yeah, no, absolutely. I know, appreciate that.
Yeah. If there's an opportunity for us, we need to grab it, I think.
Absolutely. Be in touch.
All right, thanks.
Thanks, Bill.
Good night.
I have, I have nothing really to report on this line item other than to say tonight there will be an executive session discussion between the board and VLCT's Rick McGuire on the, on the process.
Okay.
All right, so we'll close this meeting down and go into executive session, and then we'll do Linda first and then him.
That's my plan.
With a short break in between, right?
Um, yeah, do you want to take a five minute? All right, this will end the open part of our meeting.